Hello, the time is now... Oh, can you guys hear me? Everybody good?
Yes, you're good.
Okay. It is June 6th, 2023. The time is now 6:35. And I am going to call this meeting to order. Bear with me one moment. For those attending tonight's meeting, you should be aware that the meeting will be audio and video recorded by... So, how do you... Thank you. And ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts Wiretap statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Per the Air Shirley Regional School Committee Policy BD... BEDH, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between the citizens and the school committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business as posted on the meeting agenda. Citizens will have three minutes to express their views. Thank you. Can we stand for the votes of the leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please? And I'm not gonna go and order everybody. So I will...
What do you like me to do?
Yes, please.
Our roll call, Ms. Erica Spann.
I, here.
Chris Weber.
Here.
Joyce Rations.
Here.
Jim Quinte.
Here.
Ashley Pennard.
Here.
And I am here, Kevin Rethan.
Okay. I believe, do we have a presentation today?
Public participation.
Okay, so we're going to look for public participation. Do we have anyone here physically in the audience or online that has anything they'd like to say?
There isn't anyone online.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on. Next, I have the consent agenda. Next, I have the consent agenda. Forgive me, I am a tech person, so I like to use my phone. I'm going to start with the May 17th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes. It's approval for release. And then also, I have a warrant memo. So first, for the meeting minutes for May 17th, did anyone have anything that they wish to add or change or see anything that needed to be changed? Okay, could someone make... Ooh. Before we do that, let me get the warrant done. Bear with me, guys, this is meeting number two for me. Okay. So... I have AP warrant. This is easier. 1168 dated May 12th, 2023 for $617,392.2 for the 2023 bi-weekly AP warrant. AP 1170 dated May 26th, 2023 for $113,000... AP warrant 1171 dated May 26th, 2023 for $2,273.92. And that was for April credit card charges. Payroll warrant 24 dated May 19th, 2023 Payroll warrant 24.1 dated May 19th, 2023 for $7,757.89. Payroll warrant 25 dated June 2nd, 2023 for $1,014,506.65. Payroll warrant 25.1 dated May... Nope. Dated June 2nd, 2023 for $38,555.24. Would someone like to make a motion?
I may have a motion that we accept the warrant and the minutes as proposed.
Seconded.
Thank you, Asher. Okay, all those in favor? I... All right. You need a minute, so we're... Yes?
I just wanted to make one comment during your reign as the chair. The consent agenda, we've gotten into a... When we created the consent agendas to like stay tied on things that there is currently a lot of discussion about. And over time, it's like, we don't read the school committee mandates. And consider on future meetings, and maybe we don't even read the warranty. This is printed and is... Everybody can see what it is. So I think you might want to consider at some point saying, "Look, does anybody have anything like to talk about about the consent agenda?" And if they don't comment, you can move directly to what we can sort of buy. But right now, we'll just go for it, but consider that during your reign as chair.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I'm always looking for efficiency and string lining. Thank you, Jim. Okay, so we're gonna move on to new business. And we have recognition for Ms. Emily de Blasio. I hope I said that correctly. If I did not, please correct me. And also, Mr. Chad Lins... Tree? Thank you for correcting me. I always appreciate it. Dr. Renda?
Great question. Use the pool up here and ask if I'm gonna chat to join you, if that's okay. I'm thrilled to be able to do this. This is something that's absolutely fantastic for our school district and the high school. But for the third year in a row, we are what is called a champion school certified by the Special Olympics. And there are three pillars to be a champion school. It's one is to be competitive, unified sports for multiple seasons during the school year with a focus on participation. The second is all in full school engagement with a focus on inclusion. And three, student leadership opportunities for both students with and without disabilities. There are 20,469 high schools in the country, and there are currently only 7,600 unified champion schools. That's 37%. We have reached champion school status three years in a row. That's with the Massachusetts Special Olympics. The Special Olympics National Banner School Statu... Status, 20,469 public and private high schools, 166 are currently recognized with this honor, and 12, only 12 within side Massachusetts. We have been asked by the National Special Olympics to apply. That is less than 8 one thousandths of a percent of schools that reach this status. There is a lot of support for this program. It takes a ton of support from our athletic director, Mr. Kendall, to the pairs, who are the ones, one-to-ones in the program. There is no program without these people. They get help from all the other coaches and have had a couple of teachers help volunteer with their time. There is staff across multiple schools to help support the high school programs this year. And this is a district-wide effort. Even the athletic trainer has been very supportive and helpful in many ways by donating a cooler and ice to running events at our track meets and keeping kids safe. There are needs in the future for those thousands of listeners right now out there watching the school committee meeting. We need more staff involvement. We need more budget across unified activities. And actually, I have to say that ASAP has just stepped up big time and improved an impact ramp for the elementary schools to expand their unified offerings. And being recognized, also being recognized with clubs within the school and the district, more support from other sports, kids to help out at events or to be on teams, and to continue work on the inclusion and culture of high schools and the district alike. So, as you know, inclusion has been something that you've heard from my team and myself since I've started. It is a huge focus of this district, and I know everybody in this room. So I'm very happy to recognize Emily de Blasio and Chad Lins for their unbelievable work in our unified sports at the high school. Thank you very much for everything that you do. I realize it probably bred part of what you were wanting to say. But that's what happens when Michelle Thomas is in the meeting. Please feel free to have something you want to say or just if you have some questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Just to reiterate what Dr. Renda said, I am a part of ASAP. The money they have graciously offered us this year is just seed money for next year. We really, really, really need some some work from the school committee if you can to fund our program. We have some wonderful students here from the middle school and our first captain for our track team this year, Mr. Jack Kellman, who just graduated, to show some support for our unified sports teams. They really, they're our future care. I would hate to turn down students from participating in some sports that they really enjoy doing because we don't have enough funding to support pairs like me who volunteer. I volunteer my time along from taking time away from my kids at home to help support these kids that enjoy sports just like everybody else in our school district. And we need that funding from the school committee and all their colleagues. So, anything is appreciated. Would you like to... Anything else?
This past weekend, I went out to the Bull Run. They have a speaker series that they do. And they had Temple Grandin come. Anybody that doesn't know, she's one of the most famous persons with autism in the world. So she does a lot of things, writes a lot of books, does a lot of talks, teaches, a couple of doctor degrees. But one of the things she also does is talks very frankly about her life with her disability and her experience in high school, and how much she hated it. Being teased, being bullied, crossed environments in the high school, except when she went to Unified. Except when she went to our club. The only people she was really friends with were people she shared experiences with through clubs and organizations. And our guys don't always have as many opportunities as other kids do. Just really showed me how important it is that our programs exist.
For our great audience, would you expound on what sports you did and how many participants you had?
For this year, we offered unified basketball. This year is one of our school sports that we have that's recognized. So we had almost 20 kids on that team.
For basketball, it was 10.
10. So we had 10 kids on that team. And we got to travel, went to Lunenburg a couple of times. We had some other teams come here. So we do some, the games are fun, doing nice.
They have a huge jamboree.
They have a jamboree as well at the end, like a basketball tournament, where all the league comes and they play against each other. One day, we have a fun staff game. At the end of the season, the kids typically don't treat us very well. Yeah, the year I played, the game was over really fast. So we did that. We also offered Unified Mini Golf this year.
First one's in the state.
Oh, there you go.
As an activity. It was awesome. We borrowed some materials from the gym. And we let the kids be creative around the school with the little greens. So we were hitting around corners and downstairs using the ramps. They had a blast, yeah?
Lil' lame jack runner too for that one.
And so that was really fun. We did that one, and we have, that's all volunteer, the Unified Track, or the Mini Golf. We've done Unified Pachi in the past as well. It's also a volunteer position. We have done Unified Golf here, also a volunteer position. And then we have Unified Track as our only other recognized sport. And we had 15 kids on our team this year.
Nice.
For that. We have three league champions, and five or six kids play second.
Can you stand up if you're on the track team this year?
If you're on the track, stand up.
Stand up, dear. We tracked our old school records for Unified. We set seven new records this year for our team.
That's excellent. The girls beat the boys.
By a lot.
By a lot.
Yeah, that's fun and it's blast. Like, we've had kids that don't make friends in other environments that were able to make friends this year. And they're trading phone numbers, and they talk after school now. But, and they don't leave their room otherwise, so...
Been amazing to see.
Seeing the growth, the growth of the kids is huge.
I'm gonna talk last. Does anybody else have anything you want to?
Uh, go ahead, Chris.
I'm gonna go first.
You got it. So... You mentioned funding, so maybe this is a question of Charlie. Adam, in all year, we've been hearing about the Unified Sports Program. We've had students from elementary schools come. We've heard about strategic plans. It's been a theme that I think the committee's been excited about. I've maybe been making an incorrect assumption that there's parity between Unified Sports and other sports offered in terms of the... I don't actually know what all the compensation looks like. So what does compensation look like if you are track coach, Unified Track Coach?
There's, there's...
Is it not parity?
There's no parity there, no, absolutely not. We would have to, go ahead, Bill.
I would comment that some of the Unified Track coaches are in Schedule C, and they're on a level with either like an assistant coach or a middle school coach.
Okay.
Steve Kendall, the athletic director worked very hard to get him into Schedule C. We did it over the last contract.
Okay, is that consistent, high school through elementary, like?
Or secondary? Elementary does have some like chorus and music and things like that, but they don't have as many sports. They're more enrichments and after-school.
Right, okay.
So the funding that it is the pair of positions that they're having issues getting paid for is the issue that's coming up a lot. The only Unified Sports that are paid for positions are the basketball coach and track assistant coach and track head coach.
Right.
Okay?
Presumably, it requires more than two coaches to run the program.
Yeah, so when it comes to the one-on-one pairs being paid for, that's individuals' name. That's what the funding part is... That's what the funding is gonna be needed for.
Right.
And that's what, that's a topic that came up in ASAP is typically we're not gonna... We can't pay for staff. Staffing, that should be coming from...
The school budget.
The school budget. So that is something that has, that has to be, you know, taken into consideration from the school committee.
Okay.
Has there been good support for volunteer students leading the program, partnering with different...
This year, we, it was our, because we have our awesome new athletic complex. We've hosted leagues for our league this year. We had eight schools come. We had 185 athletes come. We had zero volunteers.
Our track team did not show up that day.
So our, our team, the other coaches that came, the kids that were competing, when they weren't competing, they were helping.
And that's not...
So we didn't end up with anybody.
Just a little disheartened for us, though.
We did get a couple of classrooms during the school day because our track meet started at 1:00. That they came out of class and helped welcome the other schools come to our school. But as soon as everybody was there, the classes went back inside. And that was it.
Is there a way to offer community service for students?
That's how we get people to come. If they participate, they get their community service out towards graduation.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to... I am going to address the asks that you have. So if you could, I can reach out to you, you can reach out to me, either way, within seven days. I would like to know and get more insight into unified sports. What are you looking for? What are your needs? And not just financially. I, like Chris, kind of had an ignorant assumption that there was more support going on here that aligned with my, you know, what I want to see. And I think also what you all want to see. So let's make that happen. We all know everything doesn't happen all at once, but let's start building that foundation so that we can have support. And I know if I have that as a, you know, the assumption as a school committee member, I want to make sure that we're clearly communicating to staff and students, not to say we're not. It's just all new to me. And of course, I don't want anyone being disheartened. You all are athletes like everybody else. I think that your skill sets and the way that you work and what you do and how you persevere, not only is it different, in some areas, it's even harder. But the fact that you come out and you do something that you love to do and you're finding and growing yourselves is immense and it's amazing. And that includes the both of you because you've had to learn how to be a different form of advocate than you're used to being. So we all appreciate it very much, and we want to make sure that we show that appreciation by being effective in our role and this is seeing. So we're going to follow up. I'm probably gonna have more questions and answers right away, but let's work on it and let's build on it, okay? But we truly appreciate what you have done because even with all the things that we didn't know, you still are the cream of the crop. So how much better can you be once we get on the same page? So we appreciate you. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing. And thank you, athletes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. If you'd have liked to...
I'm going to move forward to the superintendent's end-of-year progress report, part one. I like that, part.
Well, it's part one because really, this is the presentation of the district the district strategic plan, which was one of the goals. The following two goals will be presented at the next school committee meeting. Tara Bozek and Lori Wilson will be part of that because they're involved. Co-teaching, role-vision, and tier system of social media support. So, strategic plan.
Thank you.
And before we really get started into the strategic plan, I just wanted to let the school committee know or really remind the school committee that data sources that were used while performing this strategic plan. We used all the information that was gathered during my entry planning. So we talked to stakeholder groups as far as parents, students, district administrators, town administrators, fire chiefs, police chiefs, select board members, public health officials. There was one state rep in there. All district leaders, teachers, pairs, pretty much any stakeholder within the district that you could imagine. All central office staff, admin assistants, nurses. We also used all the information gathered through the equity audit, which again is parent-focused groups, student-focused groups, staff-focused groups. They gave us their walkthroughs and their write-ups on that as well as key documents. And that's everything from school improvement plans to budgeting documents to faculty and staff and school handbooks, grants, policy manuals, financial audits. We had coordinated a program review. The high school had just finished the NEASH report. So this is a really well-informed plan. And it has input from really every stakeholder that you could imagine. And one more, because I didn't keep documents. This is really a timeline of the work that we took to part of this year. We knew last summer that we wanted to contract with Lynch to run the strategic planning process. And that was a great luxury for us. Because typically, one of us is facilitating the meetings. And for those of you who've been involved in this type of work, you're facilitating the meeting, you're not really part of that meeting. And it was important for me personally to be part of that. So I didn't want to have to facilitate that meeting. And I want Charlie to have to facilitate that meeting. I wanted to be able to be thought partners with the district administrators. So that's what we did. I think we had a great product. We really, we came up with the, we tuned our district vision and mission through an equity lens in November. In November, December, we started to craft our strategic vision through an equity focus with objectives and goals. And then the real bulk of the work happened from December to April. We really started to identify and create initiatives and action plan to make sure that these goals and objectives, we were going to be able to meet them. And then in May, we started to talk about how are we going to manage this plan? We have objectives, initiatives, action plans. How are we going to know if they're successful? When do we need to change gears? When do we need to adjust them? When do we need to keep going? When do we need to back off? Really, what we came up with is to add some time to additional meetings that we already have and then change some dip-sticking that we would do with the stakeholders within the district. So we have weekly cabinet meetings that are typically central office administrators. We will check in every Monday when we have those meetings as a cabinet where we kind of are with each initiative. But every fair cabinet meeting principals are invited to. And that's where we're really going to kind of rank where each initiative is in that moment. So at least once a month with the administrators. We're gonna do this three times a year with school committee and teachers and staff in each building. So, well, actually, I can see this in all the classes. It's like, keep graduating from high school, and I can't see anymore. Happen just like that. With the faculty and staff, really what we're going to do is dip-stick three times a year with them. Right now, we meet once or twice a year with staff, or this year, we met twice, to kind of see what their thoughts were, what was going wrong, what needed to change. We're gonna formalize that in protocols, and it's still gonna be kind of an open meeting. So it'll be like a mini-town hall where we'll have topics, the initiatives of the strategic plan, where they can give us input where they believe we are, how we need to change. But it's also gonna be open for them to talk about pretty much anything that they want. We do do that three times a year. We're gonna do that in October, January, and I believe, uh, May. Yes, May. And then right after that meeting, because those meetings happen after school, we will meet with the building administration in that building to get a more in-depth view of where they believe they are with the district's strategic plan initiatives so that we can then come back and report that out to school committee. And it'll also give us very good data of where we need to focus our energy and where we can kind of be, if the team is working and it's working, let them do the work and report out to us. So it will really help us progress. Yes, sir.
We haven't even touched on nothing bold yet, but I just want to say this page already makes me the happiest because I've been a part of so many other teams where the meetings don't... You just can't do too many meetings too many up. Every meeting comes up with some other direction to head in, some other stuff. And you let people run with stuff to a certain point with occasional check-ins. So I think the timing and what's set up in here will really enable you to accomplish what's in the rest of the main body because everything... Meetings can kill a program faster than anything else. And it looks like exceptional care is being taken to make sure that doesn't happen here, so... Sorry for interrupting you.
Thank you for that. That, that, it really is intentional. Next is the strategic plan launch. This really started the last school committee meeting. I was at a different graduation at that point of Assistant Superintendent Cleary. Introduced the district vision and mission to you. That did happen, okay. And then now we are in June, the strategic plan presentation. We plan, we still plan on presenting this to staff virtually. We plan, we still plan on presenting this to staff virtually this June. We'll have one virtual meeting with the elementary staffs on Page Hill Top, and then we will repeat that for the middle and high school. In August, in September, this will be addressed during a conversation, and it will be addressed during the first two days in staff meetings. And then the parent family launch will happen this fall, September. In October, we will have a virtual parent family meeting. That will be recorded, hopefully, shared on local access. We plan to go to the PTO meetings at Page Hill Top and the shared PTO meeting of LEW in the middle school. We also will have a family forum hosted at the high school for everybody. We will be inviting all, but this will really be probably more geared towards high school families because of the really lack of a PTO. But again, everybody will be welcome to come. And we're just going to go over that organizational vision again, because it is a very important part of the plan. And that's to create a dynamic, engaged learning community that provides equitable access and opportunity for all members and empowers students to achieve at high levels of intellectual rigor, creative expression, shows of social emotional well-being, and the agency to pursue meaningful paths and thrive as responsible citizens. All right, so what do we want from that, right? We, it took us so long towards met this and to be really clear and precise with our language. But really what we're saying is, we want all of our students to achieve their personal best. We want them to be well-balanced human beings, and our students should be academic and socially well-rounded, that will allow them the luxury of having choices when they leave us. That's what we want, right? Does everybody need to go to a four-year school? No. Do we want everybody to be able to go to a four-year school? Absolutely. But that might not be the choice. Do we want our students who want to go into the military to be supported on how to do that? Yes. Do we want our students who want to open their own business to have the confidence and the intellectual ability to do that if needed? Absolutely. It's not our job to make the choices for them. It's our job to make sure they have choices. So that's really what we're trying to say with that organizational vision. We're not there yet. That's where we want to get to. Our mission, this is where we think we are now, or we're hoping we're there now, and we will be there come September. We want to inspire students to achieve academic excellence through equitable, evidence-based curriculum and instruction, responsive and representative learning experiences that foster belonging and community engagement, that cultivates students' academic, creative, and social-emotional behaviors and skills. So my elevator speech for that is essentially, we are an extension of this community, and by providing excellent instruction through evidence-based curriculum, will be the most meaningful when it is personally important to our students and it impacts the community. So, again, I misspoke for a minute. When we are an extension of the community and providing excellent instruction through evidence-based curriculum, will be most meaningful to our students when it's personally important to them, and it impacts the community in which they live. Any questions on that?
It's only 900 words, I don't know what questions.
Just shy of 900, we did it work out. So there is a strategic vision. So this is a vision for this plan. And that's to advance achievement district-wide by examining and shifting systems and practices using an equity lens to ensure opportunities that equip students to thrive in a diverse world. So the vision of this plan is to make sure that our students are equipped to work with people who look like them, and for people who do not look like them, both intellectually and socially. All right, we have four main objectives on this plan, with many initiatives under each objective, some of which are on deck, for those of you who are baseball fans, who are really in phase one implementation of this plan. So not all of the initiatives, you will not see all of the initiatives tonight. Some of those are on deck. The reason they're on deck is depending on the outcome of the initiatives that we have next year, those initiatives may change. So really, the objectives that we're going to talk about tonight, there's four. They're around special education, social-emotional learning, curriculum and instruction, and then culture of climate capacity. And that culture of climate capacity is really about who we are as a district and what we represent, and we'll get more into that when we get to it. But we're going to start with special education. And the purpose of the special education objective is to align specialized instruction across all of our schools for students with disabilities to advance achievement, opportunities and outcomes for academic, social-emotional, transitional, and vocational success. So what outcomes do we expect? Or what outcomes do we want? We want to increase students' mean or exceeding in ELA, math, and science by 5%. We want to decrease the rate of student identification for special education by 5%. We want to increase teams engaged in co-teaching by 100%. That's already going to happen. We want 100% of our students with disabilities to graduate with their cohort in four years. We want 100% of our students with disabilities educated in their own district with typical peers through expanded program options. These are incredibly difficult outcomes to achieve, but we don't believe just because they're difficult, that doesn't mean we're not going to shoot for it. In order to have 100% of our students educated in their home district with typical peers, that's going to take years.
Do you know what those numbers are right now?
That's what I...
Yeah, we have, I believe, 39 students out of district right now. So as of right now, it's 39 kids who have not graduated in district in four years.
And that 39 is K through 12?
I believe it's 1 through 12 right now, but it can be K through, it could be pre-K through 12. There's possibilities for that, but...
And that's up from what we had a couple of years.
It's down a little bit. Well, we had a couple of years. We had 42 last year, I believe we're at 39 now. That could change tomorrow. We have three kids move in that are already in our district placement. And when that happens, we have really no say in that. We can try to bring them back. It's difficult. But we also are sending, we also are sending too many kids out. We do have a lot of movements. It's kind of a really strange anomaly that I haven't seen anywhere else, but there's somewhere between 15 and 20 of those students are movements.
And they're already in programs.
They're already in and out of district placement, been moving into airshow, and when that happens, we don't have much to say. We can attempt to bring them back to district if we can support their needs, and we're hoping to be able to do that more than we currently are.
And it's a hard, it's a hard shift to make.
It's incredibly difficult, yeah.
So for that particular goal, I'm wondering, is there any way we could always have two measurements, so we have our children that are within the district that, you know, end up being taught outside the district versus those that are moving in, even though we're attempting to bring them in? Just because I feel like if we went with, you know, straight data for the goal, it wouldn't recognize the hard work that we have to maintain the students that are, you know, essentially born and raised in our district.
So we won't look at not reaching 100% necessarily, but we're going to celebrate success, but when we present the data to you, we will disaggregate it so that you know who has been with us and who was able to graduate, who has just moved in. We can look at the data that way. And even with the out of district, we can tell, shrinking those numbers is actually a huge win. But we will present that and celebrate those milestones. But really, when you're making this type of goal, especially when it involves students with disabilities, you really want to go with 100% if you can, though incredibly, especially the last one, about bringing everybody back to the district, incredibly difficult.
Well, the sports is a good example here to feed in with this.
It absolutely is, yeah.
Kevin, did you have something? No? Okay, just...
I don't see, really, I understand the background behind 100%, but I think, even lower, even if you're, I mean, now he gets a colossal bar, but I think one of the hard things that sometimes you have to do, even when presenting to us with like a budget or something, is like, look, the best place, given the needs, the best place for this kid is not here, all right? And that's, it's just going to happen more likely. You can't have enough resources to do everything you need, and actually, this kid needs to be in a place where there are more kids like this kids around, so they don't feel like they're alone. You know, I understand the sentiment by 20% there, but I don't, I think, a number like 90% would be still probably attainable, but really says like, look, we're making a strong commitment, we want everybody who lives here to come here. We all feel strongly about that. But we're also saying by putting a lower number, it's like, we understand that sometimes there's a better place for that kid to be, even though it's going to cost a bucket load of money, we're willing to spend it for that one kid.
You know, that's a good point. We wouldn't want to block a student, like who absolutely needs a special education program from out there.
And we never have.
And nor would we. So if the 100%, if you believe 100% is saying that, we could absolutely change that. That's along the lines of, you know, co-teaching, and we want students to be taught general curriculum. However, sometimes we have to pull up, and we know that, right? And we're going to make the best decision based on what's best for the student.
And I think that 90% gives you a chance to talk about that point, because if you need, like, you know what, we're aware of the whole world here. You know, we're not high in the sky, we're not shooting for the star, but this is where we have to go.
Yeah, that's excellent feedback. There are three initiatives for the special education that we have, what we believe is going to allow us to get closer to these outcomes. The first is to strengthen the access to generalized education curriculum with effective scaffolds and supports in tier one for students with disabilities. Two is to develop an effective co-teaching model to ensure students progress with their grade-level peers, which we have already done. The, it is safe to say at this point in the year that the pilots that we have going with co-teaching in every school have been successful. What we're going to be doing next year is having co-teaching available at every grade level in every school. So we're already, the training's happening a little bit later this month, so almost everybody will be trained at that point. And really, the equity impact of that is it exposes all students to grade-level curriculum by grade and appropriate entry points and supports. So, you know, the purpose is to have access to generalized curriculum, to have equal and suitable chance for all students to learn, to continue to refine an effective coaching model, increase the graduation rate, and decrease the graduation rate. Now, I want to get into a little bit more detail on special education, because, you know, what's the action plan to be in these initiatives, right? This is a publicly raising document. Charlie, if you could click on the special education, look at the top, and I'm going to show you our working document here for a moment. Okay, so each initiative, boy, this is a tough deal. Yeah. Well, each initiative has its own Excel planning page, essentially. And so for the initiative of strengthening access to general education curriculum with effective scaffold supports for students with disabilities, gives the purpose, gives the initiative objective, gives the targets, gives the owners, Tara Bosick, the school principals are main owners. Of course, you know us well enough to know that Charlie and I have our hands in everything. But then really, the meat of this is it has the action steps. What are we going to do to make that initiative successful? So for that specific initiative, each initiative has its own page, as detailed, but more detailed than this. We're going to continue building the tiered system of support framework for social-emotional learning for all students, including students with disabilities, because we know that if students' social-emotional well-being is where it needs to be, teaching them is much easier. We are scheduling, we need to schedule the schools to include planning time and effective student groupings for students with disabilities. So this is one of the first things that we had, when Charlie and I started to sit down, like, well, what really needs to change? And Tara also. What happens is we have so many kids with so many needs. For instance, let's say we have a student who needs speech and language services, but they also have a math and an ELA goal on their IUP. We have to have a schedule that will allow that student to get those speech and language services at a time where it's not math or ELA. That wasn't necessarily happening. There were times that kids may have been pulled out of reading for speech. So they might make their speech goal, but they're not in reading class, right? So it's a shift. The elementary schools are doing a great job of it now, the middle school is doing a ton of work. Mr. Christie presented his change in the scheduling earlier this year. The scheduling is so detailed now that a student can receive speech and language services, occupational therapy, reading goals and co-teaching, and a math intervention in Sarah, all in the same day, and it's seamless. And a lot of the time, they're not leaving the classroom for. So a lot of the kids don't even know anymore who's receiving services or why, but the kids are getting the services.
Brenda, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to make sure that I'm following, like, the goal correctly, so I'm going to scale it way back. But for an example, when you're talking about the students having access to general education, would that look like in the high school, I know they have the Panther block, so if we have a child that's maybe not in classes, in the high school classes, they would be able to go to Panther block and learn whatever it is they're learning? I just want to under, I want to make sure I'm understanding what year.
So in the past, if a student had a goal for reading on an IUP, what would often happen is they would be pulled out with three or four other kids into a special education room with a special education teacher and receive a completely different curriculum than what their grade level was. Now, what we want to try to do is provide that service in the class with the grade-level curriculum, by creating entry points so that the student can actually access grade-level services. So it's just a different mentality. It's, instead of pulling out and going slower, we're modifying the grade-level curriculum so that it is accessible to students with special needs.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, thank you.
We need to, we have a plan to review curriculum resources to make sure that they're evidence-based, evidence-based practices for students with disabilities. So we want to look at what we're using for our students, make sure that it's working, it's effective, and it's actually an evidence-based curriculum and not just something that people like to use. We're going to conduct instructional rounds, really walkthroughs for evidence-based tier one instructions for students with disabilities. This is something we did a ton of this year, probably through January, and then we kind of fell off the cliff. They just came up, and we weren't as consistent with it as we were, but one thing that we noticed was, when we do these walkthroughs and we're noticing little things and giving feedback on little things, they're addressed immediately, and they don't become big problems. If you address little problems and little tweaks, you can make the changes in the classroom almost immediately, rather than waiting half a year, three quarters of a year, when the students are ever are falling further behind. So we're going to continue to do that, and we're going to figure out how about the fallout effect with them January. We have shifted to safety care, Tara presented on safety care earlier this year or last year. It's a de-escalation-centered program. It does have restraint training in it. We still need to restrain at times, but this program really focuses on de-escalating the out-of-control behavior without going hands-on. It's a great program. I'm really happy that we switched to it, and our goal for that is to get 90% of the staff who need safety care training, trained. That really, that one actually really should be 100%, but the problem is, we often hire staff through these programs after the school year's started, or there's a change. So having 100% of that staff is actually very difficult to do, but we actually do have a plan for that. And we need to meet and define and clarify the parent professional roles and provide training for support staff working with students with complex needs. This may be like ABA training or some other, some other training that we can offer based on what the child needs. With co-teaching, the inclusion pairs that we have, their job is going to look different, right? So we are able now, through co-teaching, to schedule that our children with disabilities are seeing a special education teacher daily. That is because if you are a teacher that is servicing second and third grade, second and third grade don't have reading at the same time. Whereas in an old schedule, everybody had reading in the morning. So it makes it really difficult to meet the needs of every special education student with a special ed teacher when everybody's teaching it, so it's a staggering schedule goes back to that scheduling. But what we need to do is redefine the role of that inclusion para and provide them better training so that when... so that when there's not a special education teacher with the students or in social studies and science, for instance, they can provide better support and help students practice the skills that they learned when they were with that teacher. Make sense?
So if you have your special education teacher, is that always a pull-up program?
No.
No?
No. We're pushing. In fact, it is mostly a push-in program. At next year, it will be mostly push-in. There will be times when it's pull-up. There are certain things that just does not make sense. There are programs that we offer, such as Wilson or Gilliam, that doesn't make sense to push in and do. It makes much more sense to pull the students out because they're coming from many different classrooms to provide that support. That's a directed review program. But when we can, and more times than not, what we want to do is push in and provide the services in the classroom.
So are these students integrated into all the different classrooms? So these special education teachers are going into the classroom when they're getting this extra instruction? Or are they always co-teaching? Like, are there always two teachers with them? Or is it just during?
It's not always two teachers with them.
Okay.
It's typically, most of the time, it's during ELA and math. Okay? And then another time, science and social studies, we're going to try to have an inclusion pair with them when appropriate. But what we're, and this action again goes back to scheduling. What we're doing now is we're pre-placing special education students on class lists based on need. So let's say there's five, or let's say there's ten students with disabilities in grade three at Page at the top. Five of them have a reading, meet on their reading goal on their IEP, and five have a math. I'm making it very simple. It typically is a backhanded draw. But just for this example, we would have that cohort of the five students of reading together. And we'd place them in the same classroom so that when we're doing co-teaching, we only need one spec teacher, we don't need one teacher for ELA and one to go in with the math teacher for math. Right? And the teaching, and I would love for all of you to come and do some walkthroughs when we do this next year. And I will challenge you, unless you already know the teacher, to identify who the spec teacher is and who the regular education teacher is because you probably, in most cases, won't be able to do it. Because what's happening is, it's not always the students with disabilities in the group with the spec teacher, but it's the students who have the same need for that day that are with the spec teacher or the regular teacher. So the groupings are really fluid at times. And you can't point out who's on an IEP and who's not. Who's getting specialized instruction accommodation and who's not. And there's a lot of benefits to that, especially socially. Oftentimes, when you're doing pull-up, there. And teachers don't do this on purpose, but when you're not teaching the grade level curriculum and you're pulling your students out who have learning disabilities, you're lowering your standards. You're lowering your expectations for those students. But that's not really helping, right? We want to keep our expectations high and modify how we teach them to get them where we want to be. With co-teaching, that's really helping, happening. The other thing that happens is when you pull students out over and over again, it tends to create learned helplessness. So there's less effort. Students tend to try less. They wait for the teacher to initiate things. But when they're with their grade level peers and they have peer role models and they're with the kid who they're playing kickball with at recess, and there's no difference at recess and at kickball, they don't think there's no difference in learning, right? So they might need more support. There's also typically more effort when we have this model. That's what we're seeing in the results that we're seeing right now.
I like that naturally you're teaching them a transfer role or a life skill where it's not just lay down, but try it different ways and modify. I know that it benefits our children who are in the special education department, but I honestly believe that our children who may not have an IEP or something like that will probably learn something that they otherwise would not have because that student's not in the classroom.
A hundred percent.
It'll benefit everybody, so I really do like that.
It actually keeps kids out of special education too because you have those teachers in the classroom and noticing a need. Before we have to go through an evaluation or a staff process, it's putting the teacher where the need is.
Is this already happening this year, you said?
It is, yeah. And it was happening to some degree the year prior. But we piloted in every single school this year. In most schools, there's two teams in most schools right now?
Most schools.
So like a grade level team here. Page, not here, Page. At Page, it's in the first grade, in the third grade. At Laura White, third, and it's the same, first and third. At the middle school, I'm drawing it like, so seventh grade. And at the high school, it's a little different because it's facing soon, but it's happening here too. And we're going to be expanding that so that every student special ed has an opportunity to be in a co-talk classroom next year. There could be some exceptions for, some of them are substantially separate classrooms based on need.
I would say this particular leg is the, I think, most impactful, least understood, especially with behavioral students. Because, you know, back in the day, it's like, you're already given a script. Let the principal deal with this and find some way to work. But the edge of that, you want to help everybody, but you also have a core group of people who can't be held back by what you're trying to work with and that whole. I'm glad you guys can do that. That's a lot of moving parts to go. And it makes, if it's not done well, it makes students' hard life harder. It makes the teachers' life way harder. It makes everybody's job way harder, so. To try to fight your way through this to find some way of working with a couple of people in a classroom. And really, and it really comes down to the teachers that are in the classroom, the pairs that are in there to find what's like, what's going to work for this class, right? Because what worked for this class last year is not going to work next year. It's just not because the personalities are different, the needs are different, the behaviors are different. But if you find some formula here that's going to allow people to integrate without holding back the cohort, that will be astonishing. But nobody understands this is ever going to happen, and you're never making any credit for it. So, right? It's like, that's just the way this is going to go, right? That's the way it rolls.
You're hitting them heads. It's the teachers that are going to do this, right? Our job is to provide the scheduling and the resources and the time to set them up for success. So that's providing common planning time, providing a schedule where a student isn't being pulled out of their core classrooms, providing the training, the parent professional support we needed. That, that is our job. Our job is to make sure that that's there. And then the teachers are the ones who get it done.
Right. So whatever the teachers, whatever they need, just like we're doing.
Yeah.
We're doing it. And let them figure out if they need support. I know we just keep providing support. Give them the tanks and the obstacles.
We're trying to do it.
Right.
I think we have a fantastic support in Lisa Decker out of University of Florida. She is tremendous. I'm getting calls from districts that want to try to steal her from us, and we're reluctant to share the information because we'd rather charge them that seats to come into our training. But it's been fantastic. No, we're serious. We can get them to pay for our training if they have seats, right? And then the one of the. Okay. And that's really it for this initiative. But if we could go, yeah, you go to the next line.
Do you see the whole state leaning this way? I mean, every time we stick, every time anybody sticks a kid on the bus for two hours a day, that's not learning.
You mean co-teaching?
No, I mean just general, sending kids out of district.
Oh, yeah. No, there's no public school district that really wants to send kids out of district. And if we can, if we can keep them in and we want to, the cost is unreal. It just went up, was it a fourteen percent increase?
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent increase, already very expensive programs. And again, if it's something that a student absolutely needs, we're going to advocate for that. But we believe in often many of the cases that we can get the job done here as well, and not better than the.
I think there's a thing here that, you know, yes, you have kids who have needs and their needs, and we're not going to deny those needs. But at the same time, taking any kid out of community is wrong. Because if they're in community, the kids see me in school, then they will know me in the neighborhood. And if they don't see me in school, they won't know me in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and it's tough to feel a sense of belonging if you're not in school, right? And that's number one.
Taking kids out of the community is the worst thing you can do. Any kid. I know, I made that mistake.
The next objective is around social emotional learning. The purpose of this is to strengthen and respond effectively to the social emotional needs, skills, and experiences of every student. Support, engage, learning, student well-being, learning. This was an issue before the pandemic. I know a lot of people are naming their pandemic as the big problem with mental health and social emotional learning. It's made it a lot worse, but this was a problem before then. We know that the effectiveness of our academic curriculum is dependent on our social emotional supports. So if we could provide students what they need socially, mentally, health-wise, behaviorally, teaching them is a lot easier, right? Because they'll be available a lot. The outcomes that we want, and we're hoping for is ninety percent of our educators and staff meet or exceed the standards in their building's tier one curriculum. So for K to eight, that's second step. And right now, for the high school, that's Trails to Wellness. I know the high school is interested in possibly a different program. But one of the action steps for this is to get some teachers together next year in a cohort to look at second step and if it's providing what we need as a program for the K to eight and get some high school teachers together. The teachers have to use this every day and see if Trails to Wellness is where we actually, if it's providing what we need for our students. We want one hundred percent of our counselors running or co-running tier two skill-based groups. So we want our counselors working with students on social primatics and being a good friend and, you know, any number of anger management, whatever the need is for the students. Let's identify two, three, four, or five students who also need that and run intervention groups to support that. We have adjustment counselors in every single school now, so we can do that pretty seamlessly. We want ninety percent of our students in the district to provide us substantive input and feedback. So we want kids telling us what is working for them and what is not working for them. And we want to take action to that. And we want to increase students' sense of belonging and school connectedness by, that says, actually, we need a baseline for that. We will have a baseline later this month. We'll be sending out a survey to students that would give us a percentage of how connected they feel to school, how much of a sense of belonging they have to school. Once we add that, we'll kind of know how much we need to improve. But the initiatives to reach these outcomes is we want to elevate center equity through social emotional learning. We want to identify social emotional learning needs of all of our students. We want to engage the school, community stakeholders, and an understanding and advancing of social emotional learning. I think at times, people are getting a better understanding of this now, but at times, I think people still think this is fluff and kind of very soft. But these are, the most successful people that you will meet all have very well-developed social emotional competencies. If we could get every graduate to leave with well-developed social emotional competencies, they would obviously do so. And we want to, oh, I lost my train of thought here. We want to provide professional development to all educators and staff to support the social emotional learning initiatives. And we want to establish school-based teams to strengthen social emotional supports at all tiers. Puley, could you click on the social emotional learning? And this is the last time I'll go to the working page. But I just want to give you, so you don't have access to that, huh? I'll give you a few seconds and I'll give you access to that. I don't know how that happened.
It's technology. That's how that happened to me.
If you refresh, you should have that, sir. Okay. So for this initiative, I'm going to talk on initial two point four. And that is to provide professional development to support SEL learning initiatives. And we're going to kind of skip down here to the action steps, if you don't mind. But what we've created is an admin checklist for new hires. What we have found in this case is we often hire people right before school starts or during the school year. We put them right to the classroom. We need to stop doing that and prepare them to some degree before they're in front of kids. So we have an admin checklist for new hires to make sure that we are onboarding them correctly. We have a training, second steps, or Trails to Wellness. I believe this is a link to videos. If it's not, it will be soon. We want to work on the tiered systems, social emotional support, overview for the district. So each school, we're going to go to each school. We're going to explain in writing and in presentation, tier one and tier two and tier three, each building at the beginning of the year. We're going to build an overview, including the importance of SEL for everybody, for those who might not know. We're going to have equity presentations of where we are in this work and where we're going to be more clear, have clearer communications. We're going to continue to assign building-based mentors for new staff. And staff hired intermittently will start day one of being hired. We're going to take one or two days and onboard that staff so that they understand what we're using for social emotional learning, what they understand, actually, what we're using for grade level curriculum and what our expectations are for classroom management. We're also going to intro the book for new brand-new teachers in set higher education, it's called Smart Classroom Management by Michael Wintson. That's a really kind of basic, are you familiar with it? Yeah, it's a real basic, he doesn't like admin, so you might be surprised at that for using him. It's a basic, no-nonsense approach to classroom management where you really stop engaging students in power struggles. And often, that's what happens, right? You have a student who is strong-willed or has something going on, and we immediately engage in a power struggle. Now we're trapped, right? We're in this back and forth of having negative interactions with the student. So you've kind of set your expectation. Here's what's going to happen. Here are my expectations. Here's what happens when you open up to them. And then if you're really consistent with that, typically, that classroom management works for ninety percent of the students unless they have some unmet need. And that's a whole different process for us to figure out. It's going to be students. We've had success with this in the district already from teachers who were struggling with this. In fact, we had a teacher, I don't want to specify, to a grade level who was really struggling with this. We introduced the book and very little coaching. And they're really one of our go-tos now. It made a huge improvement in this person's instruction. We're going to use that more. But and that's, these are the action steps for one of those initiatives. If you notice at the bottom, there are tabs. Each one of those initiatives has very detailed action steps that will be followed to try to make this plan as successful as possible. So it's clear, if you could go back to curriculum instruction.
One question.
Oh, sure.
Ninety percent of substantive input and feedback is pretty high bar. How do you get the feedback?
So we should be able to use Google Forms. It is a high bar, and I'm kind of smirking because we have these kids all day. They're captive audience, and I don't understand when we give surveys, how we have the response rate as low as it is.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah, it is because it's pretty low. It's actually fairly low for the equity audit. And I'm thinking, they're there, they're taking it in school. Why aren't we getting responses? And I think part of that is just talking, having a conversation with both the building-based administrators and the teachers as well. When we're doing the survey, everyone's going to do it at the same time. Everyone's going to participate. And if you're not participating, you need to know why. I mean, obviously, if a parent doesn't want somebody to participate, that's a different thing. But I think we should be able to hit ninety percent.
Do you provide ice cream? Can we take the survey? It's ice cream.
No, we're just about sending one.
Let's use it, you know.
Let's use it, you know.
My suggestion was actually going to be, this is reminiscent of what we do at work. So we have to, actually, we have this goal built in by Department of Mental Health. So there's different, you know, systems and things that you can use. We use one called Mindira. And so what it does is from the time that the patient comes into the building on admission with whatever their issue is, and I work at an acute care facility, so you could imagine like there's a number of things that patients come in with, but they're all escalated events that other hospitals cannot, they can't help with intensive therapy, so that's all we provide. So what ends up happening is the patient takes a small survey. When they come in, then they take another one after they've had, they've been there a week, whatever the projection is according to their insurance company midway through. If they're a patient that ends up in a restraint, you know, some, I know that some of the teachers are licensed like I am for crisis management, when you do have to go hands-on, they'll take another survey, and then they take one once they get home. And in that process, they're asked what helped them, what didn't help them, what were their needs when they came in the door, what were their needs, you know, halfway through. And then we get the feedback to our teams and then our clinical service teams, our providers, leadership, which I'm a part of, we all kind of have now sculpted these different pathways depending on what the patient is communicating they need. And we have access to it at all times, but it does a thorough job of data analysis where it'll group everybody, but you can go into each tab and actually see the comment, so you can hear what they're trying to say. And then that way, you know, it helps with data analysis, so you're not spending a lot of time trying to, you know, get the feedback. You can focus more on like the planning around it. And I do know that they have like a school-based version of that, and they have it, you know, small children all the way up to the geriatric ages and the questions. And that might be helpful because it's the, in our case, patient, in your case, student, giving the assessment themselves to assist you, and then you can kind of match the data together pretty quickly.
Can you get copies of the surveys they take in the moment, the one they take home?
I can get your copies, yeah.
And can you spell Mindira for me? I wasn't even close, so thank you. Happy to go for that. Another way to get that feedback is through universal screens. So when we have students who, it's getting feedback from students in a secondhand. So we have a universal screener that will, it's really a, the teacher getting input on an individual child, which would tell us who's at risk, right? We can give the full, a full screener, which would give us an action plan on how to help that student. The result of that action plan is feedback also. That's another way that we're going to do that. But really, for the 90% that we're trying to meet, that's going to be, we hope to reach 90% of the survey. I know that's a, I know, yeah. We'll work for it out when we're at, then you can laugh at us then. But we're hoping we can get that. We have a captive audience. I can't see why we can't, but it's going to be tough.
You stay in this room until you get it done. There are always ways.
Or we don't engage in the power struggle.
I had a question, and I know how this is, sounds good, and then sometimes it falls apart. And to retain that new staff and to keep them more than two years, the building mentors, who's training the trainer? You are?
And a teacher is a co-trainer.
I mean, some of these mentors, they show you where the bathroom is and after that, you know. So that little key thing of building mentors and do they stay with the person after a week or whatever, you know, and check in with them, et cetera, et cetera. I think you have a very critical thing there when you say building mentors.
Our mentoring program is pretty robust and substantial. There's training, we do formal 10 hours of training per year with our mentors as part of the contractual arrangement with them. They are with their new teachers for a minimum number of hours. They keep a mentor log, they have a pretty clear understanding of what the expectations are depending if they're brand-new teachers of profession or new teachers of districts, because they require different degrees of accreditation versus support. There are observation protocols that are in place for our mentors, and there is consistent feedback that's provided from our mentors and early teachers about the quality of the mentorship that they receive and the work that's done. So I would hasten to say that we do a pretty good job, and the work that we've done has reflected an increase in our retention rate. That was one of the things that I started five years ago when I first started with the data and looked at the retention rate that we had for our staff and the number of folks that were leaving versus those that we had maintained. So this year, we had a large number of new staff. In fact, I just had a meeting before this meeting, and we had 48 people in attendance, which was kind of cool. That includes all the mentors and the new staff to the district. So realistically, if I take ballpark numbers, that means that each year I'm working directly with a co-facilitated coordinator, an elementary teacher at Laura White. She's excellent. And we've been doing this for five years, she's been doing it for eight. And that group represents about a third of the staff in the district that we have direct, hands-on connection with on a monthly basis.
How many positions are we filling for next year? What's our opening for next year?
The review.
Yeah.
Basically had.
Ballpark.
Ten.
Less than 10.
Wow, that's excellent.
I have to say that I have not seen a mentoring program run as well or as robust as what Cal does. It's fantastic.
That's important. It's a social emotional learning for teachers.
Yeah, but that's what, to your point before, Joyce, I know it was kind of intended to jest, but the reality is these mentors are really chosen, and they don't take time off, what, from their support. They treat this as one of the most important things that they have to do, shepherding a new teacher. And I take pride in the work that they do, because it's really a reflection of how much emphasis we put on the program.
And I ask these questions so that we hear about it.
Yeah.
Okay, curriculum instruction. Charlie, please drop in. This was Charlie Spencer's focus on the planning process, and they did a great job. And I'm going to not go quickly through this, but Charlie's going to talk to you about two new curriculums right after this that are connected to this. So you will kind of hear more, if that makes sense. But the purpose for the curriculum instruction is to provide equitable and representative, rigorous learning experiences that engage all learners, educators, and staff. The outcomes that we're hoping for is that 100% of our students are graduating in four years. And 100% of our students are reading at or above grade level by the end of grade three as measured by DIBELS. And 80% of our students are meeting at student standards on ELA, Math, and Science, NCAS, and grade level system. And to reduce or close the achievement gaps by 50% in ELA, Math, and Science as measured by NCAS. The initiatives that we're going to engage in to make sure that these outcomes become a reality is articulate and implement equity-based vision for excellent instruction. Two, select and implement new evidence-based K-8 literacy curriculum. We're going to hear more about that shortly. Three, implement equity-centered curriculum planning tools to create and revise unit plans across grade levels and disciplines. Four, prioritize curricular instructional improvements using cohort cycle of review revision. And five, implement equity PD for all staff that connects DEIJ with instructional practice. Many of these are already happening or in process. There is a big equity impact for this, and I think a lot of people don't understand how curriculum instruction and equity kind of mix, but it is probably the biggest equalizer or equity impact that we can have is providing excellent instruction that impacts on our students. But we need to be clear and consistent with planning and evaluation of standards aligned in representative curriculum. Provide excellent instruction in every classroom that fosters positive relationships and ensures students are able to reach their full potential. Now, I'm not going to go to the working document on this because Charlie's going to talk about the implementation of a evidence-based K-8 literacy curriculum shortly. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Culture, climate, and capacity. So this kind of became a hodgepodge, but of kind of, not really the leftovers. That's how it felt at first, but really what it is, it's almost kind of who we are as a district, our soul, so to speak. But the purpose of this is to cultivate a community that welcomes values and honors the identities and experiences of all members and proactively eliminates disparities and connects students, families, and staff to resources and supports that promote learning and well-being. So I don't know if you remember, but really, was it last year that we went over the data of subgroups?
Maybe because.
Beginning of this year, when we went over data of our subgroups, and it really showed that we did really well with our white cohort. And where were we falling down as a district was really a lot of our subgroups. And that's not every kid in every subgroup, but we needed to improve students with disabilities and students of color and economically disadvantaged kids. We needed to do better. And this plan is going to address how we're going to do better for all kids, including those kids, right? So the outcomes that we're hoping to have, and some of this you've already heard, but there is some repeat here because there's different approaches to reach these outcomes. But we need to reduce and close the achievement gaps in ELA, Math, and Science as measured by NCAS by 50%. 100% of our students have access to tier one learning. That's the same as you've heard in co-teaching. We need to increase our diversity by 5% in staffing demographics as measured by full-time employee count on school district profiles, which is incredibly, 5% is incredibly difficult to get to. We need to increase educator-student-family engagement, both in academics and social and emotional learning. We need a baseline for that. That baseline will be provided by the survey we'll be sending out soon. And increase access to resources, supports for students and families, and we need a baseline for that. We now have school adjustment counselors in every school. For those who don't know, a school adjustment counselor is just a school's name for a social worker. So we have social workers in every school, and part of that work isn't only what the school can provide, but when there's a family in crisis, what are the other supports in the community that we can connect those families to so that we get in that crisis, right? If we don't, if the crisis is a family crisis, we're only putting a Band-Aid on the student if we're only providing support to them. If we can provide support to the family, we're getting to the root cause of the problem, and that family can get out of the crisis, the kid can be out of the crisis. That's incredibly difficult work, but it's probably some of the most rewarding work that we can do as a school district. And there's not a lot of resources out there unless, you know, unless you get in trouble with DCF, that you're going to actually have somebody who's connecting you to resources that you can proactively ask for help before something bad happens. So, you know, really, the purpose of this is for, to kind of honor the cultural diversity that we have and not treat it as something negative but a positive. We want staffing that reflects the population that we serve, and the students can see themselves. We want to instill integrity and pride for the school district and the community and all of our students. And we want our students to feel school connectedness and a sense of belonging. Any questions on that? Do you want to see the working page for that, or are you?
I'm, that's at eight o'clock. Yeah, I'm going to start.
I can't see the working page when you do that. The only thing I would say to that is I'm excited that that particular initiative addresses the black and brown pipeline to prisons, because that's a huge, it's a huge issue. And a lot of times, it's not intentional by schools, but when you don't have someone addressing family needs, using, utilizing the community, and the only way for it to happen is for a crisis to get out of hand, or it requires DCF, or it requires the police, that child is now in the system, and then they just go through a vicious cycle. So I really appreciate addressing a major issue with something, I don't want to say it simple, because I know a lot of work went into it, but being mindful enough to recognize a need and try and put a positive outcome there.
Well, I appreciate that, but I do have to say that the school community has already been addressing this. When we went to Mass IV, that was a huge way to address the dropout rate and to make, you know, getting a high school diploma actually accessible for students who struggle. And we know the disparities of students who have high school diplomas and don't, and the likelihood of being involved in prison and other negative effects. But I know I'm being long-winded, so I'll stop. But last thing that I really want to show you is the very simple and I think kind of elegant dashboard that we have when we're grading. I just went in and made some random ratings, so please don't watch this, but this color-coded rating for each one of these initiatives that we went over tonight is something that we have used in the past, but Lynch kind of streamlined it for us. We can take a look at this in a second and know where we have to put our supports and our attention. This isn't, anyone can analyze this in under a minute. This is what we will be using every third cabinet meeting with principals to put our ranking on each one of these initiatives and when we meet with the staff, the three times a year. We won't be doing this every single cabinet meeting, but really, once a month, and then the three big dipsticks a year that would do this with staff and school committee. And then very last thing for this promise is this is going to be the public-facing document. Here, it is a one-page, it's a three-pager that gives our district vision, mission, our core values, the strategic vision, all of the objectives, and then all of the initiatives on three pages. It's really simple to consume. If we put the strategic plan in one document, it will probably exceed 50 pages. So this is a version of this as well as we posted on the website. That is it for the strategic plan presentation. I'm sorry this is all.
So when will you have, when will you have that? And how's that going to be distributed?
Well, we have it now, so we can make this live on the website before the end of the year. We can also, very soon, I can put this as an attachment to my weekly update and send that out, send this out to everybody, yeah.
Good. And incorporating part of that at least into the handbooks, so that the students see and feel this.
Yeah, I hadn't considered that, but we could do that, yeah.
You got to bring them home?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Adam, for that. I know when we have to do our strategic planning, it can't, it's kind of hard not to be long-winded because you have a lot of detail in that report, but I appreciate, we all appreciate the dedication that's going into that and to be able to articulate pretty much down to every level is excellent. So thank you. We appreciate that.
I just want to thank the building administrators and the district administrators and Charlie, and everybody, the amount of work that they put into strategic plans unreal, and Lynch, which was fantastic.
Thank you.
That is it for me for a minute.
Okay. So next, we're going to move on to the approval and adoption of new literacy and math materials. Mr. Hary.
Thank you. So building off of the strategic plan, one of the items that was in the curriculum instruction piece was about adopting a new K-8 literacy curriculum. In addition, we had spoken at several meetings during the school year about changes that we've made to the literacy program to kind of make it a little bit more aligned in terms of reading. And so one of the things that I wanted to put on the front burner is connected to this, Adam alluded to it with a difference maker in equity being kind of the high-quality instructional materials they choose. And a big part of that work has been on the front burner for the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the BESI, through their Curate website, which ultimately has all this information about curriculum. So this is curriculum ratings by teacher, by teachers, so there are teacher-focused groups that essentially do this work of reviewing curriculum materials that have been nationally reviewed by Everports, that's the national platform. And so through this process to identify high-quality instructional materials, materials are identified on a national level, and if they meet certain criteria and they would like to be reviewed by the Massachusetts Curate, then they petition to be reviewed, and then Massachusetts, the curator, reviews them as well. So as part of our process, we had gone through an initial selection of literacy materials, a review of literacy materials. And a lot has gone into this over the past several years. And so you may recall a number of years ago that there was an adoption of Fonda-Simpson and Al Balance Literacy Initiative that took place back in 2016. And that, with the recent work that has happened, where the science of reading has become a little bit more on the surface for everyone to see, the shift has moved away from balanced literacy to really focus more on science of reading, which incorporates kind of phonetic awareness or comprehension, phonics, and so on, to help our kids with really building their foundational skills. And what we did over the past several years to help that process, knowing that there were some weaknesses in our curriculum, is we added elements to it. So we added equity phonetic awareness, which was a structured program. high-quality material program that was designed for students in K-1 to really build their ability to understand the science, all the sounds that are made in the English language. Then we wanted to have more of a commitment to our foundations curriculum, our phonics curriculum work that was taking place on how we take sounds and shift those into print, into letters. And then we added, this year, decodable text. In other words, text that kids can actually, so they're practicing these sounds. They're trying to see what letters make them. And now I'm going to give them books that they read that actually have those letter connections in them, so kids can practice the skills that they're learning. Prior to this, kids were just reading books, typically predictable texts, which is books that they can't decode, which means that they're not practicing the skill that they're learning, so ultimately their reading skills suffer. And that doesn't get revealed until they're in second or third grade, when the shift starts to happen from learning to read to reading to learn. And so that's where, so all these things are connected. So we talk about co-teaching and supporting students and students with disabilities. Like, all of this is connected. So then we extended our use of phonics into our third grade, fourth and fifth grade largely because of the pandemic. And we started to introduce our teachers to a little bit more of the background and the science of reading. And then for the past couple of summers, we've done some scope and sequence work. But ultimately, what ends up happening is that we're hodgepodgeing a curriculum for reading. And our teachers, this is no offense to them. They are not trained as curriculum developers. That's not their job. They're curriculum facilitators, certainly. But as curriculum developers, this is the challenge. And so realistically, we have to kind of find something that actually puts all of this together, makes it a little bit easier for us to deliver quality instruction. So to that end, we had taken, because there was a grant affiliated with this that we shared at several meetings before this, that we did actually get. And as part of that grant, some of the requirements were, the programs that we had to select from had to be all green on Everports, and they had to be highly rated from the Massachusetts Curate site. These were the seven that fit that category for K-8. So we started by reviewing these seven. I personally met with all the publishers. And then we started to form an adoption committee. The adoption committee was about 40 staff members who were interested in this. So that's the degree to which people are interested. If you just take, exactly, if you just take the number of reading teachers that you have in the district, so realistically, we have seven teachers at every grade. On sixth grades, that's 42 in elementary grades. And plus the middle school is another five teachers, so that's 47. If I count the reading specialists, we have about four or five more, so that's 52. So of the 52 people who are teaching reading, I'm not including special education, they were invited to, we have about 40 or so folks. So about 70% of our teachers who are involved in reading were involved in this process. The biggest piece that we had to do is develop kind of a vision for what literacy would look like in our district. Because absent of that, it's very difficult to pick materials because then you just pick materials that you think look nice. And you don't end up with high-quality materials. So we applied for the grant. We looked at all these reports on both Everports and Curate. We developed a feedback rubric that was based on the vision. And then progressively, we took this list of seven and we started to narrow this down. And so we got down to two, and that when we formed a subcommittee for both K-5 and for the middle school. The intent was to select one program that cut across all K-8. Unfortunately, there was not one that met all of the needs of the staff and the students from K-8. So we ended up, we selected Intereading for our K-5 program, which is published by Harvard Magazine and Hope Midland Harvard. And our 6th grade program is Amplify ELA. So those are the two recommendations that have come up. Inevitably, these programs, so as I said before, they meet our needs. They meet the requirements for Everports, they meet the requirements for Grant. We can provide professional development, support them. We also can provide professional development all year through the next year when we contract with an outside vendor to provide that support for our staff as we move forward. So as I said before, we had more than 40 people, so that's the list of all those folks. I thank them personally, but I wanted to make sure that I put them on here too. And I'm sure that there are folks that have contributed in some way, shape, or form who didn't make this list too and who spoke to them too. But this was a huge team effort to go through this process. And if anyone's ever been through a process that involves curriculum adoption before, they'll understand the pain it's been struggling to go through. So this was pretty remarkable. Our next steps in that process are ultimately to finalize, and this is pending the approval, thus the need for the vote from the school committee, is to arrange for the materials to be delivered, arrange for professional development, initial professional development take place, curriculum work will take place over the summer, professional development set up for next year, and then implementation progress monitoring and support for staff. So there's a lot that goes into it, and so this is kind of like a step on the road. Connected, rather than stop and answer questions about literacy, I just want to jump into math just for a moment. We have a similar process for mathematics. You may recall in our K-8 program, we have an integrated math program where it basically blends algebra, geometry, those concepts, statistics, measurement, data representation, and so on. It blends all of those together as an effective means of teaching the interconnectedness of mathematics for our students in K-8. When they get to the high school, you may recall from your own youth that you went into algebra, geometry, and maybe algebra II in your progression. We at Air Shirley Regional High School haven't done that. We've continued on the integrated math course, which has been fine. But when we looked at our results over time, we've seen that we haven't been meeting the needs of our kids as effectively as we should. And so we contracted last year for the consultant to come in with an outside perspective to give us some of their input on our program, to highlight some things, work with all the teachers, and identify that it might be time to make that shift. Because we have to shift our instructional focus, and sometimes that's easier to do when you use a new curriculum focus. And in addition to that, when we look at the success rate of our students, and you've heard this from Principal Christie before, that we have struggles with our students who fail an integrated math course in their first year, it's very difficult to have them continue on in the sequence to integrated math II or III because their foundational skills are intricately connected. Each of the courses in the sequence. Whereas a traditional sequence, algebra, geometry, the skills are not as translatable. They are from algebra II to algebra I, but typically you have a geometry that interrupts them. So if a kid who struggles in algebra may actually be pretty successful because their geometric readiness might be better than their algebraic readiness, and geometry would be better for them. And so they could be successful in geometry course and while at the same time taking algebra, therefore making up the credits, earning the credits they need to graduate, meeting Mass Four requirements, and so on. So we followed a similar process, reviewing highly-rated programs. I've listed the five programs that are out there. I'm not going to reel a big old suspenseful piece. Meeting with the publishers and so on, and the final decision that was made was that we ended up, or we selected, big ideas following a traditional algebraic sequence, traditional sequence for algebra, geometry, and algebra II. Our next phase, actually Friday, we have virtual trainings taking place for all of our high school math teachers on the platform for algebra. This is the line that I teach for understanding structure that we have in place. And these are un-recommended to the school committee. So special thanks to the high school committee, which included all of the math teachers, including math support staff. We also have the eighth-grade teacher, Jackie Hanson. It was the eighth-grade teacher in the middle school for mathematics, so she was involved in this. And two of our special educators, Chad, of course, you saw earlier this evening, and Chuck Wood as an inclusion special educator. So my request is ultimately for you all to approve the adoption of the previously identified high-quality instructional materials that I've previously identified, Intereading, Amplify ELA, IntereadX.
Okay. So anybody have any questions? All right. Go ahead.
So if I understand this right, the reason you have these different years of adoption is because you're easing out the integrated math and putting these in, right?
Yes. So algebra goes in.
So the kids that started this year are going to be in the integrated level stuff until they graduate, right?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure I was reading it right.
Yep. Thank you for bringing that up, though, because I'd forgotten. I'd like to mention that. So students in eighth grade and ninth grade this year coming, 2024, will be participating in algebra. So some students in eighth grade will be doing algebra. Those students in ninth grade, what would have been integrated math I, will be doing algebra. Those students who were recommended for integrated math II will continue on that track. And then progressively, this leading edge of students entering into algebra this year will go algebra as ninth graders, geometry as 10, algebra II as 11, and then move into their next choice after that.
So this is for mainstream and then kids who are doing more advanced math stuff? There's calculus and a few other things?
Yes, that hasn't changed.
In the world, right?
Correct. We still have pre-calculus, we still have statistics, we still have calculus, A, B, and C.
Okay. Just Chris? Thank you.
So thrilled with the A.L.A. materials. Can you say more about big ideas? Mainly because they are of the ones we looked at lowest on Everports and aren't on the Mass site. So I'm curious, just like, when you looked at the materials, how you reconciled those gaps?
So we narrowed down the list. We had narrowed it down to big ideas, and I believe one of them was the, was Reveal, I believe, from McGraw-Hill. And so when we talked to some other school districts who were using some of these programs, and then also thinking about where we're going next in terms of teaching for understanding and how to build that, what we found is the districts that were having success were those that were using big ideas from the ones that we had spoken to. And that's ultimately, so what it comes down to in this process is what we believe to be the best fit for our staff and for our students to help them kind of get to the next level. So that's where the decision was made.
Jim, did you have any?
Yeah. On the elementary level, is the Footsteps of Brilliance still in effect? We were reaching back to families before we started.
I have to check on when that contract expires. I don't remember if it's this year or next.
It's this.
And maybe this year.
Is there a right for that?
At this time, there's not.
There's not?
The usage of Footsteps of Brilliance has declined over the past several years. And so largely, we've been focused on implementation of our literacy program moving forward. And I have not spent a lot of energy or time on the Footsteps of Brilliance to see what the next steps will be.
Was there any, any feedback on why it was?
The program itself was largely used to support students who are struggling and to students and families to come back to this reading outside of school. And the reality is, is that during school, it was not being used. And so the amount of time or amount of resources that we invested in the product was not necessarily sustainable. In addition, we didn't have a large participation outside of school. There were some that participated, no doubt. But in terms of continuity or expansion, not as much as we would like.
And as for the restructuring of the math program, I think I liked it because it more clearly reflects what they're going to see if they pursue higher education, right? They're in this course, the newer this course. This is a prerequisite for this course, and it's very specific, I think. I mean, probably just because that's how I was raised and what I went through in a particular school, but also when they get into, if they pursue their education at college, that's more than likely what they're going to see. The more used to it they are, the better off they are. And I think it was already answered that after algebra II, you'll probably see trigonometry and analytic geometry and differential, whatever track people are ready for at the time they're ready for it.
Yeah. For students, I mean, our upper sections beyond algebra II are no different than what would happen from integrated math III. So students would go to pre-calculus by and large, or they would go to statistics, and then the next phase would be going to calculus.
Good. Excellent. Cereia.
You guys? Or do we have the other? Okay. So I will take a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept the curriculum, new curriculums. And ma'am, and in ELA, as presented by Charlie tonight, I will open it for discussion.
Didn't we just have a discussion?
I'm sorry. You can discuss it after the second.
Okay. Does anybody have any other discussion?
You have a second.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ashley. Okay. Does anybody have any further discussion? No? Okay. So let us take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good. It's passed. Thank you for all the work that you all have done. Okay. Next, Bill, you've been quiet all meeting. So I know you're going to talk about the 2023, 2024 non-unit employee annual increase.
Yes, ma'am, chair, there's a memo in the packet regarding the increases for the ASRIA, the teachers' union, and the ASPY, which is the clerical custody, food service, and paraprofessional. And also, a couple indexes, three indexes for inflation. The teachers' contract calls for 3% COLA, 3% COLA this year on the salary grid. So 3% for everybody who is above top step and not moving on the grid. Teachers that are moving on the grid, their average increase is 5.6%. That's with the step and the COLA. The ASPY units, we have tentative agreements with three of the units, custodians, clerical, and food service. I put in the tentative wage agreement that we have for custodians and clerical is 85 cents, a flat increase for every member the first year. And then 3%, I think, COLA in years two and three. Food service, we really needed to enhance the grid because it was very low. The starting rate, the first step was $15, which is minimum wage. So we dropped two steps, the two lower steps, and added two new steps at steps nine and 10. And then 3% COLA in years two and three. Paraprofessional, we have a tentative agreement on the wage gap. We're still currently negotiating with para unit. They've also agreed to the wage proposal of 85 cents, a flat increase for each member, and then 3% COLA in years two and three. The average for all those units is 4.8%, and includes steps for people that are on the grid and anything that moves a step. Down at the bottom is the Consumer Price Index. These are all 12-month measurements. So we're able, for the U.S. inflation, 4.93 as of April 2023. CPIU, which is urban, urban consumers, for the same 12-year period, 12-month period, 4.9%. And then for Boston, CPI for Boston for 12-month period, March 22 to March 23 was 4.7% increase in inflation. So that being said, with the teachers' contract at 3% for the second year of their contract, we're recommending a 3% increase for all non-union employees. That would include administration, technology, childcare, everybody who is not represented by one of our bargaining units, our unions.
Any questions?
Chair, I make a motion that we do the 3% in accordance with what the teachers are paying for the non-union employees, non-unit employees. Excuse me.
Do I have a second?
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous, so it's passed. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. We're on a superintendent's report.
Okay. I'm going to try to make this quick. District updates. The Air Shirley Regional High School class of 2023 graduation happened on Friday, June 2 at high school, and the school graduated 90 seniors. Although the weather did not cooperate to hold the ceremony on August, it was a lovely evening for our students and their families. A big thank you to all the works so hard to make this year's graduation a memorable moment. An update on extended school year and summer learning. We are very excited to offer extended school year summer learning program again this summer. The program will run Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 11:30, beginning Monday, July 10 and ending Thursday, August 3. An update from Keystone Educational Collaborative. We have been asked by Keystone Educational Collaborative to share with you that they are in the process of acquiring 143 Jocelyn Street, Munster, Mass, to provide for their growing need for space to support their students. They are looking to secure a loan for $5,377,000 through Mainstream Bank for the purchase, a purpose of purchasing and renovation of 143 Jocelyn Street. And will be converting 20,000 square feet of the 34,000 square foot facilities to support 12 classrooms, ancillary service space, office space, and conference space for our member districts. Purchase and sale of this property is scheduled for June 28, 2023. A letter from Keystone Collaborative with this information we found in tonight's meeting packet. It's also linked on the superintendent's report. Some staff updates. This is not a great one. Courtney Knoll, the assistant principal at Laurie White, will be leaving us at the end of this school year. Over the past six years, Courtney has served as both a teacher and an assistant principal, and her contributions have made a significant impact on the LAW school community. Throughout her tenure, Courtney has been instrumental in implementing positive changes that have benefited staff that have benefited staff and students. Her dedication and hard work have created a more vibrant and supportive learning environment. We are truly grateful for her commitment to our school's mission and vision. As Courtney moves on to new opportunities, we extend our best wishes to her future, to her future endeavors. We are confident that wherever she goes, her passion for education and her ability to inspire others will continue to make positive differences. I did let her know that that door is always open to come back. We also are welcoming a new staff member. We welcome Kristen Campione. Kristen will be joining the ASRSD family on July 1st as the Director of Student Services. Kristen comes from us, from Quinnen Regional, where she was the Director of People's Services and has worked there for years. Prior to that, she was at North Metal Sex as the Special Education Director. Kristen is familiar with the area and commented to us that she feels like she's coming home. She will join us at an upcoming school committee meeting so that you can all meet her. I have to say that Tara did share that she was at a regional meeting of special education directors and director of people services, and there surely was the talk at that meeting for being able to secure such a well-respected and veteran administrator as such as Kristen. So we're excited to have her. And we do have a sports update. This is the final sports update for the year. Joyce, I apologize that I have not Mr. Kendall delivering this. We know that, how much you enjoy.
Can we record him or something?
You know what? Maybe, maybe we'll do that in the future.
Adam, that would be a huge improvement.
The spring sports season is winding down, which is a handful of activities still going. The varsity baseball team defeated Mystic Valley Charter on Monday in an opening round of the MIAA Division V State Playoffs. John Iacone, Noah Hans, Brian Holmes, all homered in the win. The Sixteenth Panthers host Sutton in round, in a round of 16 game tomorrow, Wednesday, June 7th at 3:00. The softball team had its season end on Monday with a loss to West Colston in the MIAA Division V State Tournament. That is, that is a up and coming rivalry.
Do we know where that game is tomorrow? Is it here?
I don't know now, but I can, I can get that updated. You can post that to social media, and we will let you know also. The girls' flag football team plays St. Mary's of Lynn on Thursday in the final regular season game. The playoffs will occur Friday, June 16th, at Chilwell Stadium. That's exciting. Meanwhile, nine middle school athletes qualified for state middle school track and field championships on Saturday, June 10th, at Gardner High School. Noah Carveli, long jump, 800 meter run. Jack Leoni, the mile, the 800 meter run. Logan Warren, 100, the javelin. Erickson Levi, lovey, excuse me, the discus. Brady Knox, the mile. Peyton Brulid, what was that name? Sorry, sorry. I want to make sure I say it right.
Brugard.
Brugard, thank you. 100-meter hurdles. Jane Marshall, mile, 800 meter run. Jiala Maze, 100, 200, long jump. And Destiny Sobot, 100, 200, will represent the Panthers on Saturday. The end of the season athletic celebration will occur Monday, June 12th, from 4 to 6 on the tariff. It will include music, long games, preparations, and ice cream. Registration for the fall will open up this week, and that is all for the superintendent's report.
Hold on, I'm just thinking of something. I'm a little disappointed if you could let Mr. Kendall know that our track team's not listed here, varsity, boys and girls.
Not well.
The track team are, once again, District 6 regional champions. We just had several athletes participate in the all-state meet, which our, I think our 4x100 girls' team placed 18th in the entire state. I think the girls' 4x400 team placed 15th in the entire state. Cole New placed 15th in the state in the individual 400. Arthur Rigaro placed 16th in the state in the 400, and Isabel Resnahan placed 10th in the state in the 400 hurdles.
Awesome. Well, we thank you for correcting that.
There was actually another page here that got lost.
Our apologies for missing out.
Thank you so much, Adam. I know there was a lot of guests, Joyce.
So I was curious, and I asked Bill a little bit about this before the meeting. So the fact that Keystone is purchasing a $5 million, plus million dollar building, how's that going to affect us as members of the Keystone Collaborative? Or do we have any idea? And any, they didn't give us any projections like, oh, hey, guys, this is going to increase what you owe us, et cetera, et cetera. So it's nice that they're announcing that they're borrowing $5 million. I'd like to borrow $5 million, but I thought they were a little incomplete here as the projections that they might have by doing this activity.
Did you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that one. There, we pay a small assessment to be a member of Keystone. It was $2,500 this year. I imagine they may pass a little bit of, through that. We also pay for tuitions, out-of-district tuitions. So they'll probably factor that into those tuitions. And also, we purchase services, ABA, PT, OT, BCBA. So I'm sure those three venues will, they'll factor some of that increase in. The debt will come down, trickle through on those.
Yeah. I mean, our budget is set for next year without those increases. And then if, how soon this happens and how soon they come along with those increases.
Well, that increase would be in addition to the 14% on out-of-district tuition that the OSD approved.
Okay.
So it'll be in addition.
Right. Just, it's not a standalone thing that we're looking at here, so, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to ongoing business. So as to discuss and vote on the Thrive Act and a resolution for that, maybe you want to move forward with that. Thank you, Ashley, for being so dedicated and really coming up to us very fast to get that done. So I'm going to open up discussions. I know that we had, we really were centering the focus around, we all were in agreement regarding removing the MCAS, MCAS graduation requirement. And then I know, then we kind of got into talking about the receivership. Upon review from what my interpretation is, is that we're removing the money aspect regarding receivership. And also, I think Kevin, it was you who brought up the point that in our resolution, if we solely want to focus on the MCAS portion, that may be better because we're all in agreement with that, and we can kind of step away from, I don't want to say minor issue on the Thrive Act, the money and the receivership. But that was my interpretation of it and kind of how I was thinking of us forming that motion and resolution, because that seems to be what we're in agreement with, but it's not just me. So I just want to get everybody's perspective before we look at making a motion and voting.
Okay. That's a good read. We could be in the weeds forever on the other side of this topic. It's definitely complicated. This looks like we have unanimity in it. I think it's an excellent read.
Okay. So I will take a motion, and anybody can take a crack at it however they want.
I'd like a motion that we, or we're, our Thrive Act resolution as presented into the act.
Any seconds?
So it still has the unjustly targeted communities in there? Is that?
I think this is the statement.
So what we're doing is we're focusing on removing MCAS's graduation portion. We're not going to focus on?
So is the, well, Jim made a motion. But what we have in our packet is the same draft of the Thrive Act that we previously read.
Right, yeah, right.
So what we would be presumably voting on is if we want to draft a new resolution.
Yes.
Do you want to vote on that?
Well, this is in the act, not written.
Right, but this is the original one.
That's the original one that we're looking at.
We don't have an updated version.
This one doesn't have anything about receivership.
Next to last paragraph?
It's the last sentence. Purpose of the high-stakes school district and individual schools and the state receivership.
So how, let's do this. Chris, do you want to make the motion specific to exactly how you just said it, which means that we would create a resolution for the Thrive Act in accordance with?
All right. I would make a motion that this committee drafts a resolution in response to the Thrive Act that voices our support for the removal of the graduation requirement attachment to the MCAS, but does not take a stance on school receivership.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. So we're going to take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. It is passed. Do you need a moment?
So somebody going to send us that wording?
Whoa. Yeah, so now someone's kind of read it.
I think we could use what we have and just remove the sections that don't.
Yeah, you can take out that next to last paragraph.
If you don't have the section, yeah, I think otherwise.
Then I think otherwise it doesn't.
I think we can probably, the way this is written tonight, I think we could probably just make an amendment to the last paragraph and follow what we're going to do.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. That sounds great. Okay. I'm going to move forward onto the next vote. So we have the proposed school committee meeting schedule. We talked about it last week. We need a second to vote. We just did.
We did.
We just did. Should we actually vote? Do I go to sleep? I'm sorry. You, you might have, because you said aye. I heard you.
I want to hear a replay of that.
Okay. So last school committee meeting, we talked about the proposed 2023, 2024 school committee meeting schedule. And really, the key element there centered around not having the school committee meeting on the same day as voting, because that specifically affects people that are in the district that work, like, for example, administration. Our administration would be here all day. They're not going to be able to go to their, you know, voting places, vote, and then make the school committee meeting. That's just an example. I'm sure there's more for those that are involved. That was, that was really, I think, one of the highlights for that. Does anybody else have anything that they need to discuss before we vote? Nope? Okay. So, all right, let's go ahead. And I am looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the Air Shirley Regional School Committee proposed 23, 24 meeting schedule.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. We got two. I love it. All right. So ready to vote. All those in favor of the proposed 2023, 2024 school committee meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
It moves forward unanimously. Thank you all.
And Madam Chair, if I could point out to the committee that at any time, we can add or subtract meetings as necessary.
Absolutely. All right. So we have our policy review report. I'm going to take that away. You might have especially read this, Chris.
All right. Well, thankfully, we are going with Section H, so this can be very brief. Section H.
Yeah. Negotiations.
Yep. It is on negotiations. In your packet, you have the red line version. I can give, I promise it will take less than a minute to describe what the red lines are there for, so. Section H, or Policy H, negotiations, that is from the state, how to conduct or construct a handbook. It was never intended to actually be included in a handbook. Negotiation goals, the policy version that MASC and Air Shirley have matched. The one difference is we are adding the legal reference. For negotiations, legal status, Air Shirley and MASC had the same first paragraph, same last paragraph, two different middle paragraphs. MASC speaks to the employer's rights. Air Shirley spoke to the employee's rights. So the recommendation is that we keep the opening paragraph that we had. We add into it the languid one, sorry. Add in Sections 1 to reference the paragraph that we're adding, but include this first sentence in the case of school employees. Remove established by law because we have the legal reference. And then, on the last policy update.
HF.
HF. We have updated the pronouns to be their, they, instead of his, her, she, he. And then we have added under number 1, and all other mandated subject of bargaining. And those are the changes.
I have to, I have to say, after reading HF, I thought, no, we never want to do that. That adds a lot of complexity to the book.
I'm happy to take questions. I'm also happy to take a vote if we want to move this in and make Michelle's night. If people need more time with these changes.
I would make a motion that we accept File H, including HA, HB, make sure I have this right, and HF as part of our policy.
Do I have a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Awesome. Thank you.
Discussion.
Discussion. Okay.
Just one, one, just happened.
Yeah, I was like, I can't do this without doing that.
Actually, it's funny, it's just, so I'm just, I was HB, in the case of school employees, I think municipal should say this, because we're not.
Is it safe?
Municipal should say it. So in the case of school employees, to be that, that is a good catch.
I'll take that, I'm good. It really helps, and also recognizing this is the only time in history that this will be read.
Great.
What's the document?
Do we need a motion?
So we should make a motion. Maybe I'll make it.
Yeah, well, you.
They keep it clean.
So we're good with the original motion?
Change, I mean.
Where's the change? Which one do you intend to?
So we, like, what happened, how did we, we voted on my amendment?
Okay.
And then we go back to the overall, and then we, we're done.
Changing municipal to district.
So we're taking that out? We're not putting that in, right?
No, that is an addition to this.
Oh, that's an addition? Okay. Okay. Jim, could you do it?
Yes, yes. I, I make a motion that under File HB, we change in the additional sentence, municipal employer to district employer.
Second?
Second.
Awesome. All right. Vote. Are we all in favor of the motion on the floor? Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, it passes? Do we need to do the other motion?
There's no other, just, there's no other discussion, and then you go right to the vote for each.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, we'll go on to the original motion that Joyce made? No discussion? Okay. So, do I still need a second for, for Joyce's?
We just made the vote.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure. And Kevin, are you good? Because I know that was a lot.
Kevin, you're good.
James.
Kevin, who's the person?
Chris. Okay. All right. So we're going to vote for the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. It passes.
I'll just say, this Thursday, anyone who's interested, 6:45, subcommittee meeting, we'll be going through the second half of J and hopefully K.
And then we're done, aren't we?
And then we've got to start voting on some really long sections.
Yes. Yes. We have to go back to the beginning.
So.
Is this something that happens regularly, just?
No, just every six or 10 years.
So, yeah, no, sorry. So we are going through, Eric and Joyce have been going through every policy in our policy manual.
Okay.
We've been getting support from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and we're going policy by policy and reviewing them all.
Oh, we can send you the invite, too. There's a.
Now, you can bring up to review anything that you wish at any time, but to do a wholesale thing here.
Update, so, we're going to the next meeting or?
Yeah. What is that? Do you know what policy it is?
Yeah, it's Fiscal Management, page 13. It's all like the procurement thresholds. They just weren't updated when all the laws changed.
Well, this was, are you looking at the current one?
It was on the, the one on the website? That's got to be the current one. Is that where it's actually looking?
Well, we can place it on the website that we haven't totally approved yet, right?
So come to the next meeting, and then you can bring it up, and we'll move forward So come to the next meeting, and then you can bring it up, and we'll move forward with that. I love that.
Talk to Chris if it changes.
Okay. All right.
So I see, yeah.
I have to show.
Yes, sir.
If I may, J, I think, is student's discipline?
Yes.
J is student.
Yes.
So I haven't seen an updated, so we should talk.
Yes.
We haven't seen updated information from the state on recommended wording related to the recent launchings that took place.
So why don't you show up at the meeting Thursday?
I don't know that will happen, but I appreciate the decision.
This, this is what I would like. I know, I know exactly what you're getting at. So if you want to, you know, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, and there are a number, yes. This is, let me go, I'm not gonna go through my notes for Section J, what we've gone through so far, but there are many places where it was, ask Charlie.
Yes, so we could submit.
Also, there's one for Section I that you sent.
Send the recommended change.
And probably Massachusetts Association of School Committees should have that also. Because they keep up with that.
They should, but I don't know if they have, because we had some, I remember coming to this committee last year, I think, for a change in J.
Yes.
For two different policies within J. And that came from the State Department of Education as part of a tier-focused monitoring review, which I don't think MASCE had the knowledge of or the wording changes. So I don't know if MASCE is gonna have all of the updates.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we'll coordinate with you, Charlie, because we already have those questions. And then that way, also, you can look at the revisions, because then that way, we can be proactive.
Yeah, that'd be great.
J is earned.
Okay.
Great, thank you. We'll need to go through I's of committee first, so you can have plenty of time with J.
J, yes.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, for chairperson's notes. Jim has definitely given me a good idea as far as brainstorming. And we have a lot of new members on the school committee, so I feel like, and when I say new, I mean under 10 years. So I think, I would like to make it acceptable, and I think we all know this, but to kind of vocalize where we are here so that we can get together and kind of be on the same page. So I am gonna be reviewing, obviously, efficiency streamlining, but I still want to vocalize questions, just like I did now. We don't have Michelle here, who's the brains of this operation. So of course, there's a lot of questions tonight. But one of the other things that I've observed and I think might be more beneficial for meetings is when we have presentations, particularly when we have one like Adam was trying to give, where he needs to give us a lot of information and it's very detailed. I would like to wait, and we're gonna do our discussion, questions, comments, after he's completely finished his presentation, because that can really throw him off, particularly if he's trying to remember any person that's presenting. I'm just using Adam as the example. It can throw them off, especially if they're trying to convey something important. So moving forward, rather than interrupting anyone who's presenting, I'll wait. And then we always have a session where we talk, and I think it's just, it's more formalized, it's more streamlined, and it helps the presenter to be able to stay on task and topic with what they're trying to do. So I'll make the change, but I want to make it aware and apparent to all of us now. At the last school committee meeting, we talked about when we have to have certain communications, like we're trying to communicate our goals, and then we're trying to navigate the quorum. So I spoke with Michelle, I also spoke with Adam. The way that I'm gonna manage that is I am going to, in an email, in the two-section, it'll have myself and Michelle. I am gonna blind copy each school committee member, because then we're not cross-talking each other, but we're all getting the information out and getting it to Michelle. So anytime we have any kind of work we need to do or action items in between, that's how we can communicate with one another, just so that that way, we can move forward and be effective in our school committee meetings. Everybody got that? All right, cool. And then, I don't have any other topics for discussion. Anyone else? No? Okay, can I have communications covered?
May I, shortlist? So announcements on June 6, 2023. On Wednesday, June 7, Page Hilltop Family Celebration Night from 6 to 8 p.m. at Page Hilltop. On Thursday, June 8, Middle School Arts Night from 6 to 8 p.m. in the middle school. And on Friday, June 9, Grade 8 Graduation. The reigning date is June 13 at 6 p.m. in the middle school. And on Wednesday, June 14, Middle School Science Fair from 6 to 7 p.m. in the middle school. And Friday, June 16, Grade 8 Semi-formal, 6 to 9 p.m. in the Debbens Conference Center. And Wednesday, June 21, half-day and last day of school. Dismissal time for the high school and middle school is at 11:20 a.m. from Laurel &amp; White and Page Hilltop at 12:15 p.m. And on Wednesday, June 21, school committee meeting at 6:30 in the middle school library.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so we are going to move into executive session. Help me navigate if I'm misnavigating. So I'm going to say pursuant to MASC General Law 30A, Section 21, open negotiations to discuss the superintendent's contract as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee. The committee will return to the open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. And I believe we still do our adjournment now, right? And do the roll call vote, or we do that after?
No, we do a motion.
After, we do a motion to go into executive session with the vote.
Thank you, we're all learning together, thank you. All right, so we are all set, and we'll move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Awesome, thank you, Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you.